Welcome, everyone. This is the Auburn School Committee meeting for April 10th, 2024. A call this meeting to order is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open-meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. All members are allowed to participate remotely. For the public to join the meeting remotely through Zoom, use the link posted on the agenda on the town's website. All are welcome to join us in person here at 5 West Street. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn cable television. Thank you. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Maggie, you want to?
Yep. The vision of the Auburn Public Schools is to educate and prepare students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. We will create, maintain, and support an environment that fosters a sense of belonging for all students in our schools, respecting race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, homelessness, poverty, spoken language, and ability.
All right, thank you. Do we have any citizens' comments tonight? Here or on Zoom?
Can you look through and see if anybody's raising their hand?
No.
No.
I don't think you see up there. I think you got to scroll through the top.
It's usually under the participants, there's a hand up.
Nope. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to special recognitions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, we do have a special recognition. And tonight, we'd like to recognize Aviana Germano. She is a first grader, a first-grade student in Mrs. Jemez's class at Packerchog Elementary School. On Wednesday, March 27th, Aviana was at home with her mom when her mom suffered a medical emergency. Aviana was so responsible and brave and was able to call 911 to get her mom the help she needed. She also called her grandmother to alert her to the situation. Her grandmother was trying to get off the phone call to call for help. However, the police were already arriving because of Aviana's quick action. Mrs. Stanek has already awarded her a certificate of bravery and responsibility. And tonight, again, we want to recognize her this evening. We're so proud of her and so glad her mom is feeling well. Nicely done, Aviana. So, Aviana, I don't know if you want to come up tonight. We have a certificate for you as well, if you'd like to come up here.
I would love to shake your hand, too.
Yes. Very brave.
And we're also giving, so this certificate says, this certificate is given to Aviana Germano for her bravery and quick thinking when her mom needed her help. We're so proud of Aviana. Nicely done. And then we're also giving you a pencil that says, "You will change the world because you're already doing great things." Nicely done. Good girl.
Good job.
You want to shake everybody's hand up here?
Absolutely.
Good job, Aviana.
Great job.
Come on over here, let me give you this. And then I want you to just face everyone. Can we all give her a nice round of applause? Nicely done. And you don't have to stay for anymore. So you can take Aviana home. Thank you for coming this evening. I'm glad everyone is well.
That's best.
Oh. That's a nice hug from our friend.
We can send those pictures after.
Oh. That's wonderful.
Let's start from the top.
Very cute.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Awesome.
Thank you so much.
Awesome, awesome.
I'm glad everything is okay.
Very nice.
Thank you. Bye, Aviana.
Good job.
Very cute.
All right, I will seek approval of the minutes from March 27th, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March 27th, 2024.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And do we have students? I know Molly was coming and going and, nope, and Bella couldn't make it. So, all right, we'll catch them next time. All right, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, for Student Spotlight, we have some students from Bryn Mawr on their project recap or B-bots. Tonight, it's B-bots, yes?
It's just B-bots.
It's just B-bots. So come on up and introduce everyone, please. Mrs. Beverly is here with Ms. Sylvester.
Come right over here, right inside of you. Right here, my friends.
Can you put, they have a...
Oh, I'm so sorry, thank you.
They'll pull it up.
All right. So here we have with us today, I have kindergarten teacher Toni Maurice Gillette Sylvester and two kindergarten students. I have Theo Yanka and Vivian Faris. Let me just click. All right. So our, we're here to tell you all about B-bots. We were awarded a grant through the Blackstone Valley Educational Foundation this year to integrate coding into our kindergarten and first and second graders. So we want to tell you a little bit of ways of how we can code and what that is about. All right, these are my friends. We just introduced them. So we're going to talk first all about the buttons on B-bot. All right, you ready, bud? Can I move this microphone?
Give it a shot. Be gentle.
Just Mrs. Stanek.
All right. So, Theo, can you tell us all about the buttons on B-bot?
So, this one makes it go street. This one makes it go life. This one goes make it right. This one makes it go left. This one grows its brain. And this one makes it go.
Mm-hmm. And what does it mean when you say clear as brains?
Um, that means it takes all the stuff the person did.
Yeah.
And then it restarts.
Excellent, excellent. All right, hold on, next part. All right. So we want to show you how you can go through and code using B-bot. All right? So we have one of our mats. This one involves three-dimensional shapes. And my friend Theo is going to be the holder of the mat. My friend Vivian is going to show us how to code. So we have cards that are here, and it tells them, "Program B-bot to a certain place." So we would put it on the floor typically, but for visuals, we're going to have Viv go through and just kind of show you on the board, holding everything up. So we're going to start it. And let's say that we need to go to, what shape is this, Vivs? That is a sphere. Point to the spheres on here. So we have a couple different options. What are the spheres that you could code B-bot to? So we have an ornament, a baseball, the moon. All right, Viv, which one are you going to code B-bot to? To the moon. All right, so start him and then tell us, how are we going to do? What steps are we going to do?
We would go one forward, and then we'd go another one forward, and then it would get there.
And we get, we get there, you would have two forward motions in that algorithm? Okay. So now, let's say that we wanted to go through, and this time, we wanted to send him to a cube. A cube. Can you find a picture of a cube? Ooh, okay. So now, do you want to start at the moon or start on start? The moon. All right. So what do I need to do to go through and send B-bot there?
We would go down one, and then down four, then down one.
So how many times did I have to go down? From the moon to the cube? Three times. What was the important thing I wanted to remember in between when I coded him to my sphere at the moon, to my cube block? Clear his brains, because what happens if we forget to clear his brains? He won't know where we want it, right? And we learned a big word. Do you remember what the big word was that we learned when we put all of the directions for B-bot in there? Into his brains? Step one, two, three, four, it's called an al...
An algorithm.
An algorithm. So we learned all about the algorithm to be able to go through. You B-bot. All right. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Sylvester really quick.
So during one of our professional developments, we had the opportunity to learn about B-bots and then creating the B-bot mats. So there's a template that we use, which is just these open squares. And then you can upload any type of picture that you want, so it depends on what you're learning about. I created one for living and non-living things and then also the individual cards that go with them. So the cards that I created showed just the items that were on the B-bot board, as well as questions of, can you find the living thing that can run? Or can you find a living thing that, you know, might drink water? Or something along those lines? There's also some clues of just, can you find a living thing or a non-living thing? So it's very differentiated depending on what students are using it, what level that they're at. And then in professional development, and we all got to choose something that we were learning about in our classrooms so we can make it specific to a lesson that we're teaching. And then the best thing about B-bots is that you can share them throughout the school. So once they're created, we have them and we can store them. And then anybody who wants to use them as learning about that topic can do so.
Great.
But these are just a few, very quickly, a few different ways that they've used B-bots throughout. These are some of our math 3D shapes, BLA using sight words and math turkey timewreames. These are kids specifically in Mrs. Sylvester's room throughout the year that exist. And then some other ways in technology with Mrs. LaBretton. She was looking at, you know, how to go through and review expectations, class expectations and iPads in the beginning of the year. We had Thanksgiving themes where they had done a turkeys-in-disguise project, and we were able to do that utilizing B-bots as well, using three different add-ins to be able to add, retelling using the gingerbread story, states of matter, rhyming. These are some related facts, you know, looking at addition and subtraction, those fact families that exist. This is one of my favorite ones, was one of our second-grade teachers, Mrs. Anderson. She had, she sent home every, to every family, a square with a heart and asked them to write compliments and kind things about each of the students that were in her classroom. And then kids had an opportunity to code B-bot to their particular heart and then share those, those special positive things. It was a great way to kind of tie in families and community as well. We also utilize B-bots at Family Literacy Night. And these are a couple of the activities that we had. We had beginning and ending digress with our space theme, some beginning sounds and a bunch of different ways that exist there. So there's lots of different ways that we've been using them. That's just a little sample of how we've used B-bots. Another great thing that I just saw this week, we had a kindergarten teacher let each of her kids create a square for their house in a neighborhood. They were looking at like, so they had like squares for like Bryn Mawr School and the fire station and different places. And then where their homes would be within this map. And they're able to go through and kind of use B-bot to code to different places.
Nice. Awesome.
Want to have any questions for our friends? On the spot. Any questions?
Is it fun to use?
Yeah.
How many B...
Oh, that's what I was going to ask you. Go ahead.
How many B-bots are there in the classroom?
There's, there's six that come in a hive. So through the grant, we were able to get a hive. So there is, there's six of them that exist. Sometimes people will like borrow one B-bot and use it like in a center. Other times, they'll get six of them and we'll have multiple mats that will be able to be utilized.
Excellent. Nicely done. Wow. Using those. Very nice job.
Very good.
Thank you, friends.
No. So my friends are there and my family. Thank you so much, you may.
Nicely done. Yeah, come up and shake hands. Come on.
Well, I want a high five.
I love high fives.
Good job, great job.
Nice job, Theo. Nice job, man. Way to be. Way to be. Get it? Way to be.
I didn't get it first.
Thank you, my friends. You're funny, funny.
Really cute.
She's like, "Hi, lady, I don't know you." Thanks, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Great job.
Very well done. Nice job. Thank you.
So cute. Okay. So we will move on to new business.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, as I tend to be the letdown after the kids, we will go through our public hearing regarding the FY25 proposed school district budget amount totaling $31,487,276. Following my overview of the budget process, each member of the leadership team will read aloud the budget requests for their school or department. If there are any questions regarding a school or department's request, we will entertain those questions prior to moving on to the next presenter. So I ask, Madam Chair, would the committee entertain a motion to open tonight's public hearing on the FY2025 budget?
Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for the FY2025 budget.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm, we're going to join the leadership team, and I'll go up to the podium.
Okay.
Okay. And now, and you're going to find my presentation.
I am.
It's not going to let, is it going to let me click? Oh, there we go. I have to, all right. Thank you, I'm happy to be here this evening. So as is our practice, we're going to begin this evening where we review our mission and our hopes for our community with our mission, vision, and commitment. Again, something we reference at the start of every meeting. But before I get into the presentation, I want to take a moment to thank the members of the leadership team who are here with us this evening. I am so thankful for the thoughtfulness, sincerity, and dedication that these folks bring to this work. There's no other team I'd rather work with. This district and our students are the beneficiaries of their efforts. And I am just so thankful for what they do each and every day. And this evening, I am going a little off script, Madam Chair. But I also want to take a moment to just thank one member in particular, Mr. Joe Fahey. Joe Fahey, the Director of Facilities and Maintenance, will be retiring effective December 28th of 2024. Joe has served the Auburn Public Schools for approximately 20 years. During this time, Joe has helped to maintain our buildings in a manner that has ensured our students and staff have clean and safe facilities within which to work and to learn. Joe has been instrumental in the construction projects for both Auburn High and Auburn Middle School, along with numerous other major projects across the district. Joe has also led the district-wide safety team for a number of years, helping to ensure that we have the best possible safety plans, processes, and tools in place for our schools. Joe has also been a huge resource to the town of Auburn as he's always ready to step in and lend a hand, no matter the project, even if it requires driving to Florida on occasion, which he has done for our Fine Arts Department. Joe's easygoing manner, high level of expertise, his generous spirit is going to be very hard to replace. On a personal note, I don't think I ever shared this with you, but Joe met me at the front door of Central Office on my first official day as superintendent. It was seven o'clock in the morning. He opened the door for me, and since then, Joe's been nothing but a constant source of support, even at 4:30 a.m., when I'm getting ready to call a snow day. So thank you, Joe, for all you've done and all you'll continue to do to support the Auburn Public Schools.
So I'm not happy about this, by the way.
Okay, so after that, we're going to finish. We're going to go on with our presentation this evening. No, I skipped a slide. That's okay. I'm all sad about Joe. That's okay. So the slide before this is about the strategic plan. And as you know, that continues to be a working document that drives the decisions we make every day. And as I've said many times, it ensures that we're all rowing in the same direction, which means we're going to make good use of the money that we're provided. We believe that each school, from preschool to the high school, should have guideposts, and that's what that strategic plan does for us. And this isn't by accident, but by design. This all came together with a number of folks working on this to make sure that we're looking out for the whole well-being of our kids. We also have school committee pri... Why can't I get back here? There we go. I went a little bit ahead. This budget continues to reflect the commitments and goals that the school committee has provided to us around maintaining appropriate and effective class size, positions focused on the social and emotional well-being of our kids, ensuring that our content areas have updated materials, that our contractual obligations are met, and that we respect the financial support that the school department has received from the townspeople of Auburn and the town of Auburn leadership. So as we've been through before, again, this budget does not reflect any new positions. So our staffing levels are meant to maintain class size. We've used October 1st enrollment. Our school-based materials and supplies are nearly level-funded, no new positions. And there is an emphasis on the social and emotional well-being of students so that they can access the academic content. Our IAs and ABAs are noted in their current assignments, although we've already begun working on where they'll move to next year based on student need. We've level-funded all grant monies using the FY24 amounts, so that includes the 240 grant, Title I, Title II. We've projected the Medicaid reimbursement to be $140,000 as adjusted and improved at Fall Town Meeting. And special education circuit breaker reimbursement is anticipated conservatively at 70% for FY25. We continue to maximize the use of offsets from our revolving accounts, which include busing, building rentals, satellite and galaxy, preschool, and athletic revolving accounts. We are, again, participating, as you voted at one of the last meetings, in school choice with approving 85 seats for 2024, 2025. We're currently in the process of getting those filled. Again, we've, we've budgeted again for 11 regular education school buses. This year, we've accounted for an anticipated 5% increase in special education private school tuitions for students in our out-of-district placements. And we continue, we will continue staffing social, emotional, mental health positions across the district in trying to decrease the number of students that have the need for out-of-district placements. Increases in electricity, fuel, and contracted services are reflected. This was a big area of increase this year, and I'm going to touch on that a little bit later. Oil pricing, electricity, as well as our national gas contracts, those have all been negotiated and are all in place. Cecilia played a critical role in getting all of that in place along with the town. We continue to use solar credits from the rooftop arrays at the middle school and high school and the solar project in Rutland. So we have projected offsets totaling $3,651,644. And just a couple of highlighted areas of cost increase, more specifically. There's $94,000 increase in building maintenance and repairs, a $12,000 increase for water, $53,000 for fuel and electricity at the high school, along with $26,000 for security, equipment repair, service contracts, and fire extinguishers. An area of cost decrease is our tuition that we've budgeted for non-public schools and special education collaboratives by trying to keep students in district with the established programs at Swanson Road, the middle school, and a high school. So that reflects a decrease in the budget of $117,130. This budget may result in two teaching positions remaining unfilled for the, for two people who are retiring. On the advice of town leadership at the last Select Board meeting, we have kept these two positions in the budget. I've given you new copies of the budget this evening, but with a dollar value of $1. And on that advice, what would happen is if our state numbers change, if for some reason, there's a change in the budget that allows us to fill the positions, this gives us the flexibility of not having to go back to the town to add a position back into the budget. And so you'll see those as placeholders with a $1 value. We just did a transfer from a supply line to put the dollar in there. So the budget amount did not change. In additional funding, we have received some, received some state funding for our newly arrived students that will be used to offset costs. The anticipated offset, additional offset is $267,583 for FY25. There is already $197,583 reflected in our offsets with the remaining 70 being used, being used for two temporary positions to support these students. Because as you know, there, there's a need for English language support. Negotiations with the AEA and ABAs have yet to be finalized, and we've done our best to estimate what this may cost while respecting the financial parameters that we've been given by the town. And again, final state numbers are still unknown. So we present to you tonight a draft budget of $31,487,276. It reflects an increase of approximately 4.5%. As you know, our initial budget was an increase of 5.63%. So we have significantly had to tighten our belts. But I think we've done so responsibly and, and now with the hope that, you know, we'll see how the ongoing funding works. And so, yet to be determined. Do you have any questions about any of that this evening?
Through the chair, I just want to make sure I was understanding right. So the positions that are open, that you are not filling, so if the need comes in six months or eight months, that means that you can open them up and fill them?
Without having to say that we're adding a new position.
Okay.
So because the positions were already existing, this allows us, by keeping the dollar value in there, it allows us to leave them in the budget. So should the financial, if the money becomes available, we can just fill them without having to go through the town to add a position.
Okay. Okay, that, that was the piece. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Any other questions? Through the chair, I just want to thank you for all your hard work on this and the leadership team as well. It's hard to have to get us to where we need to be, and I really do appreciate all your work, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think, Madam Chair, at this time, if you want to facilitate, we can begin with having the members come up to report on their budget.
Okay, great. We'll start with Mr. Alan Keller, Assistant Superintendent and Preschool Principal.
Thank you. Good evening. I want to start by saying, you know, as you've heard me say here at subsequent meetings or previous meetings, we have many exciting initiatives in teaching, learning, and curriculum that are tied to our strategic plan that are represented in the budget. And as I think you all know, our preschool continues to be an amazing environment for our youngest learners. So the FY25 budget for teaching, learning, and curriculum and the preschool is $714,868.35.
Okay.
Any questions?
Seeing none, all right.
Should I stop sharing?
All right, thank you. Next, we'll have Cecilia Wizbricky, the Business Manager from Central Office.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the Central Office budget, central administration salaries, we have a total of $1,571,052. For central administration support cost, For a total, central administration total budget of three million, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and ninety five dollars and ninety one cents.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, Cecilia? I just have one.
Yes.
Just because I'm curious. Under the central administration salaries, I'm just wondering how many people?
Well, it includes like the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, the business manager, the people services director, our technology director, just trying to think, it's mostly the and the secretaries and my payroll person, my accounts payable person, so.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to Mr. Gregory Walton, the Director of People's Services.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So for the Director of People's Services budget, people service salaries are one million, four hundred and seventy nine thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars and nineteen cents. For.
Just wiggle the mouse. Hang tight. Mrs. Stanek, did you come up here when we weren't looking?
That wasn't nice.
What did you touch?
Oh.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we have it.
Okay.
Okay. People's Services support cost is nine hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and forty two dollars and thirty seven cents. And. What happened to me? No, it's that guy. Total. No. Total cost for people services is two million, three hundred and ninety four thousand, five hundred and fifty one dollars and fifty six cents.
Okay, great, thank you. Do we have any questions for Greg?
Yeah, through the chair, what for salaries, like who are you including in that?
It's mostly special education teachers.
Keep going.
Special education teachers that we have in budget.
Okay.
District. Some of them are also included.
P T O T. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. Is that it? Yep. All right, great, thank you. All right. Move on to the the best and the brightest, Mr. Joe Fahey, our Director of Facilities, who thinks he's leaving in December, but.
I don't know, he's got his hand on my shoulder, that's not good. That's not good.
Am I being live?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I just have one number, three hundred and ten thousand dollars, nine hundred.
And seven.
I jinxed myself, guys. Three hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars and seventy nine cents.
Can you just repeat that? I didn't hear you. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Have it right this time.
Do we have any questions for Joe?
No.
Would you like to say the number one more time?
Yeah. Thank you. Oh, man, all right. Next, we'll welcome Mr. Eric Bouvier, the Director of Technology.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Director of Technology costs for the next school year are two hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and seventy three dollars.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I had just one.
Yeah.
So what is included in this cost? Is that that upgrade that you had told us about before?
No, this is for next year. This is mostly just a lot of service contracts, software agreements, that type of stuff.
Okay. Great.
A little bit of hardware, but not a lot.
Okay.
All right, great, thank you. All right, next we'll have Mrs. Brooke Beverly from Bryn Mawr Elementary School.
Good evening. I have three numbers to report. One is Bryn Mawr salaries at two million, five hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and thirty nine dollars and seventy eight cents. Bryn Mawr support costs at a hundred and two thousand, six hundred and forty five dollars. Bryn Mawr's total budget at two million, six hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and eighty four dollars and seventy eight cents.
Okay, any questions for Brooke?
Seeing none.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we'll have Mrs. Jennifer Stanek from the Paketchog Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm glad I'm not the only one that makes this technology break.
Don't touch the mic.
I'm not touching the mic, I promise. The Paketchog salaries are two million, three hundred thousand, nine hundred, fifty five dollars and sixty five cents. Paketchog support costs, one hundred twenty two thousand, nine hundred, seventeen dollars and thirty cents. Paketchog total budget, two million, four hundred, twenty three thousand, eight hundred, seventy two dollars and ninety five cents.
All right, any questions for Mrs. Stanek?
Through the chair, I could have asked Brooke this too, but what do you guys put under support costs? What is like your?
Let me just double check at that. So the support costs are classroom supplies, the PE supplies, the principal supplies, office supplies, those types of things.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, awesome. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll have Dr. Susan Lopez from Swanson Road Intermediate School.
Hi, everyone. I was told I was supposed to say a joke from my colleague, Mr. Desto. But we always joke, who's going to be reading the numbers or fumble on the numbers? So I guess I'm free of that, Mr. Fahey, but.
Just kidding, it's all out of love, right, Joe?
How many opportunities do we have to be able to heckle each other on TV? Thanks for having all of us tonight. Okay, Swanson Road Intermediate School salaries total four million, six hundred, thirty seven thousand, nine hundred, thirty two dollars and eleven cents. The Swanson support costs are two hundred, twenty one thousand, eighty one dollars and twenty five cents, and the Swanson total budget is four million, eight hundred, fifty nine thousand, thirteen dollars and thirty six cents.
All right, any questions for Dr. Lopez? Oh, seeing none. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we'll have Mr. Greg Desto from the Auburn Middle School. Dying to see what sneakers you have on tonight.
Obviously.
Thank you, everybody. You know, if the monitors were going to go out on anybody, it's best that it was Greg Walton because he's used to it from his extensive karaoke career. Never misses a beat, that guy. He's unbelievable. Okay, salaries at Auburn Middle School for the coming year are proposed at five million, six hundred and fifty two thousand, nine hundred and seventy nine dollars and forty four cents. Auburn Middle School's support costs, three hundred and twenty four thousand, eight hundred and twenty five dollars and seventeen cents. And the Auburn Middle School total budget, five million, nine hundred and seventy seven thousand, eight hundred and four dollars and sixty one cents.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Desto? Seeing none, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, last but not least, we have Mr. Daniel Delongcham from the Auburn High School.
Good evening, everyone. It's always hard to follow the guy with jokes, right?
I know, yes.
So our Auburn High School salaries come in at seven million, one hundred and eighty six thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and two cents. Our Auburn High School support costs come in at four hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and fifty five cents. Our Auburn High School total budget is seven million, six hundred and sixty seven thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty seven cents. I also want to add our athletics and fine arts total costs come in at five hundred, ninety nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty six dollars and twelve cents.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Delongcham, seeing none. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
So I know you can't see my slide, but I am ending this evening with a quote I ended the presentation with last year, which is, "History will judge us by the difference we make in the lives of everyday children." And sometimes we forget that, but sometimes we remember that. And I appreciate the work that all of you put into this, all the people that have worked to create this budget and the work that our teachers and our staff do in our buildings every day. Because what we do matters. And I promise you that this budget is going to be used responsibly to make sure that we do the best we can by our kids. So I thank you. And I thank Madam Chair with the committee entertain a motion to close tonight's public hearing on the FY twenty five budget.
Yes, any comments first from the committee? I just want to thank all of you very much. I've been on the Strategic Plan Committee for ten years, and we did the Equity Audit Committee, and we have a vision, and it's you guys who are implementing that vision. And yeah, I feel like we are rowing in the same direction. It's been a lot of work, and I just thank you all for making it happen, so.
Through the chair, it's definitely for the kids. I wouldn't send three kids to the schools every day if I didn't think it was a great place for them to be. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close tonight's public hearing on the FY twenty twenty five budget.
I'll second. Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's a vote. And thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you, everyone. Run for your lives.
Unless you want to stay, no?
Yeah.
Can you open that door? I think it's getting a little warm in here.
Joe, I don't know who's going to want your office. I think they're going to be clamoring over it down there.
Good night, have a good night. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
He always does something.
Thank you, Brooke.
You too.
Night.
On again. Oh.
Should have asked technology in the beginning.
No. That's because it is up. They said he can see it.
Oh, really?
Okay.
So at home, I would just like do this to the wire until it worked. Jiggle it.
All right. Okay, we. Thank you for preparing all that. That was a lot of work.
It was a lot of work.
Everyone's great, so very excited.
Well, now this evening, we have Arnold Lundwall, the Executive Director of the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative, to give the committee information related to their creation of a capital surplus fund to assist for potential growth and to be prepared for any unexpected large capital expenditures that may arise. So all you.
Dr. Chamberlain, thank you. Madam Chair, esteemed school committee members, thank you so much for having me here tonight. Again, my name is Arnold Lundwall. I am the Executive Director of Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative. And not with me tonight is Lena Travinsky. She is my Director of Operations and Finance. The collaborative itself has been around for forty nine years. So we've been around for a long time, serving students in Southern Worcester County. And we are just shy of a hundred thirty students enrolled right now, so we're small. We're one of twenty four educational collaboratives in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And we primarily serve students who have special needs and have behavioral, emotional, social dysregulation, but we serve a wide range of students as well. Students with ADHD, learning disabilities, autism spectrum disorders and the like. So we do provide tuition to students from kindergarten all the way to age twenty two, because we also have intensive special needs programs. Medically fragile students attend that program. It's a small program. Our two campuses are located in Dudley, Massachusetts and in Southbridge, Massachusetts. Our Southbridge campus is grades K to six. Then our Dudley campus houses the middle and high school, along with our intensive needs program. So for us, we interestingly don't own any real property. We rent from two wonderful landlords. And our member districts are kept apprised of our relationship with landlords. Our Board of Directors is comprised of the fifteen member school districts, of which Auburn is one. And so those are the members that I report to. Doing some work this year, some professional development of my own, going to some workshops, I learned that there's the opportunity for the collaborative to put together a capital surplus fund. And this is a little bit different than some of the monies that we are allowed to keep in reserve. That's not necessarily for capital surplus or capital fund matters. That fund allows us to keep twenty five percent of our yearly expenses. That truly is a rainy day fund. It's been used maybe once, I would say about fifteen years ago. Again, I've been with the collaborative since two thousand and nineteen. I signed on the dotted line as Executive Director just as COVID was happening, so it's been a very interesting few years. But what I learned was that we don't have a parachute of sorts to help us. Should our landlords say, we're done with being landlords, or we're selling the property, or for whatever reason, the relationship doesn't work anymore, maybe something catastrophic happens to the properties. Our properties are interesting. They don't look like traditional schoolhouses. One is a renovated farmhouse on Route one thirty one. Two miles down the road, we use a reconstructed bowling alley in Southbridge. So we make good use of it. But again, we don't actually own any capital, sorry, any real properties. If I was to go to a bank, unlike a public school, I can't get MSBA funds because we're not recognized as a local education agency. A bank would simply laugh me out of the building if I said I wanted to purchase these properties. So I'm here, along with the other fourteen member school districts over the next few weeks, to hopefully garner an approval vote from you and at least two thirds of our fifteen member districts. So with doing that, the vote would be, or a motion would be, to approve the creation of a capital surplus fund, as well as the limit for the balance for that fund to hold. The limit that we discussed at a board meeting recently was set at two million dollars. You might ask, why two million dollars? That would allow us, should we need to either find a new property, find a new landlord somewhere, or do maintenance on the property to help our landlords and offset tuition costs, we'd then be able to do that. Our leases do allow us, write a first refusal, but I don't have the money to put down to actually say, okay, we'd like to purchase these properties if we want to do so. This capital fund would allow us to do that. It's a ten year plan, and again, it's generated only when we run in surplus. The two years during and coming out of COVID, we did run in a deficit. But this year, we're looking at a fairly substantial surplus, primarily because we lost staff, much like the rest of many school districts and other collaboratives did. And we weren't able to refill those positions. As you probably have heard in the news and everywhere else, the pipeline for educators and special educators in particular is really dry. So we've been able to save some costs that way. Our enrollments right now are actually above what we budgeted for this year. And so unlike a school district where you go to the municipality and ask for a certain amount of money to be spent the next fiscal year, we set a budget with our typical enrollments as well as other services that we provide. And then if we exceed that, then we're starting to make money and starting to bring money, and that's when we have surpluses. The collaborative right now is in a very healthy state financially. And we're doing a lot of hard work to bring students in. The amount of enrollments and requests for enrollments that I've had since COVID is right now over two and a half times the rate that we were at prior to COVID. We simply don't have enough educators to provide. So I'm having some unfortunate conversations with superintendents, with special education administrators, saying we're going to either have to put a waitlist on for this student or we just don't have the space. Long term, because we have those two campuses and because we are currently very small, I would love to see our collaborative under one roof. It would really provide for incredible vertical alignment. We see that in the summers because we have small enrollment for our E S Y program, our Extended School Year programming. And we bring them all together, and watching my staff work together is nothing short of miraculous to watch. So again, the real reason that I'm here is to hopefully hear from you, any questions that you might have, as well as to establish the fund itself and approve that two million dollar limit. Again, looking to do maintenance on the property to help our landlords and establish, you know, or strengthen our already good relationship and have that limit be at two million dollars. The other thing that I would like us to take a look at is we don't have a lot of green space. We'd like to beautify what we have, maybe make some walking trails, make it more accessible, ADA accessible for our students who are wheelchair bound. As well as perhaps down the road, create a gymnasium. It would be a small one based on our footprint. But we have had those conversations with our landlords in the past. Creating a fund like this would allow us to help out and be good partners with our landlords. With that, I'm not looking for any sort of money, although jokingly I did say I'd come to the table here, sharks, looking for two million, a twenty percent share. No. At no point do I then go to the member districts to say, will you fund this? It doesn't have to be funded immediately. You can build it up over time. When the time comes that we wish to spend monies, I then go through the board, the superintendents that I serve, and ask them, okay, this is what we're thinking of spending it on, goes through the motion and the vote and whatnot. Then those monies can only be withdrawn through their votes. Trying to think if there are any other questions that I've heard. This is my fourth visit, so. But if you do have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
I was just wondering, with the money that you're talking about surplus money, I know oftentimes when a collaborative has surplus money, it's sent back to the district as a credit. Is that the type of money you do that, you keep the money in that fund in lieu of giving it back to the district?
Potentially. We haven't provided credits in the past few years for obvious reasons. We're running out of deficit. This year, there was that, that was actually done this year, and it's prorated based on the number of students that each district sends. And then we, the Board of Directors, we advise them, this is the pocket of money. We could still do that. But again, it would be up to a discussion, a vote, and making sure that we're using the monies wisely. The other place that we've placed surpluses is our insurance fund, our OPEB fund, to try to fund that for our retirees. We're making some good gains with that, so we'd have to balance where we're placing these monies, and this would just be one more account for us to take a look at.
One more question. Are you able with the tuitions, like I'm looking at something like a Norfolk Aggie, they have a tuition and then there's a capital expense which is added on to the tuition. Is that something that?
I have no plans for that.
Any other questions?
Through the chair, when a student comes to your collaborative, it's the district, correct, that pays for that student to attend?
That is correct.
And if I can just add, Madam Chair, with Mr. Lundwall's leadership, we have a great resource through this collaborative. Not only do we have some students placed there, but he and his staff serve as a great resource. And, you know, I cited in my presentation, the programs that we've begun at Swanson, the middle school and the high school. We had some staff from the high school go to observe the work that they do there. And it was extremely beneficial with what they saw. So they provide us with all kinds of supports for some of our most special students. And I appreciate the leadership of Arnold and how he has taken this organization by the reins and really, really made it something quite special and a great resource for us.
One note that if I may add to it. Prior to me coming to the collaborative in two thousand and nineteen, I was the Special Administrator for Grafton Public Schools for seven years. Grafton happens to be a member district. What I found with Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative and what drew me to apply for the position was, in those seven years, the collaborative sent back four of my students, not because they didn't want them, but because they were doing well. One of the students graduated with high honors. So the collaborative does this year in and year out. On the average, anywhere between three and five students. On the average, anywhere between three and five students across our 15 members sends those students back, because we know, we know we're gonna have more coming along that need help, that need the very specialized instruction and relationship building that we really do quite well. Um, so we are, that's one of our big missions and our visions and our values that we hold dear, is that if a student is ready to head back to their district, to the students with whom they grew up with, we're gonna do that, uh, because it can be very isolating, uh, especially initially for a lot of our students.
And we, through the chair, we've seen that in Auburn. So, and I agree with Dr. Chamberlain, it's, it's been a great experience and a great relationship.
Thank you.
Through the chair, how many students are with them right now? Are you able to share that?
Three.
Three.
Because as you know, our numbers from last year, we had 18 students outplaced, we're down to 12 this year, with a couple slated to come back next year, so.
Yeah, you do wonderful things over there. Um, I've seen over many years that I've been on this committee, the work that you've done. And, um, it's just, yeah, I think it's only fair that we support you the way you support us, and, um, it's not really costing us anything, it's just helping him create this safety net, so.
Thank you.
Any more questions or comments from the committee? All right.
You have a good motion, because I think. Arnold, you need that, you need the motion with the limit of $2 million.
The motion to create the fund and set the limit as $2 million.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the SWC EC's request for the creation of a capital surplus fund with the limit of $2 million.
I'll second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote, and best of luck. It's.
That's a lot of meetings.
Thank you, Arnold.
It's a lot of, it's a lot of. It's a time, it's not. I'm done on, I think, May 28th.
Thank you so much. Yes. There you go.
Yep.
Yep.
And.
That'd be great. That'd be great.
Yeah, thank you. Have a great night. Thank you for all you do. Yep, that's great. Okay, well, we already tackled the Joe, sadness of Joe leaving, so do you want to go over that again, or?
No.
Move right on, okay.
Here, it's not.
Yeah, okay. We will move on to unfinished business. Um, and it was originally going to be, uh, Dr. Chamberlain's evaluation update, but I am still working on it, and, um, it's so, more to come. So it's gonna be probably our next meeting, or, yeah.
How hard is it to spell awesome?
Um, all right, so we will move on to the Teaching and Learning Report. So take it away, Mr. Keller.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair.
He has no slides.
Slides, not more, doesn't he?
I do.
He's pulling it up anyway.
I've gotten a lot of feedback that you, um, missed my, my slide presentation, so they're back.
It did flicker on for a second.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I just, um, so the folks at home, uh, can see it, um, oh, but you can't, so that's.
It's okay.
But everyone.
Okay, well, at any rate, so, uh, I'm here to, uh, share with you tonight that we applied for a grant from the Department of Education for Investigating History at grades five, six, and seven. This is a social studies curriculum, um, that the state, uh, had piloted for the past couple of years. It was written, uh, with, um, the Department of Education, um, guiding the whole process, and Primary Source, which is an organization that's based in Watertown, Massachusetts, that does a lot of professional development. Uh, they're the, they are the authors of the curriculum. Um, you've heard me talk, uh, when I've talked about Student Opportunity Act Plan, about high-quality instructional materials. That's a major push from the Department of Education. Uh, and what I have on the screen here that you can't see is, um, is from the Department of Ed's website. Uh, it is part of their educational vision. Uh, there's a lot of resource and, uh, research that talks about the importance of high-quality instructional materials. So we were excited, uh, by this potential. I've heard since I've been here, um, that, uh, we have a desire to increase our rigor and relevance, uh, of our curricular materials, uh, in social studies, so. So I just want to go to the next slide.
Us down on the.
Okay, so Investigating History in a nutshell, uh, it is, uh, it's, the, the intent is for it to be grades three through eight. Um, grades three and four, that actually just came out, uh, for a pilot for districts, uh, to look at next year. But grades, uh, four through, excuse me, grades five through seven have been piloted for the past couple of years in the state. Teachers have been very involved in giving feedback, and were you part of that, Ms. Rayfield?
I was not part of the pilot, but I am involved with it now to a point where, like, I do give feedback on lessons.
Okay. So this is not a pilot, this is an implementation, but the state is, um, um, offered this opportunity for districts to implement one or two units from grades five through seven. I met with, uh, the teachers in all of those grades, and they, uh, were very eager and excited to take this on. And so we learned, um, that we were able to get it. So it is, um, it's been pilot-tested. As I mentioned, it's fully aligned with the 2018 frameworks. It's based on historical inquiry, empathy, current world and civic relevance, and culturally relevant instruction. Uh, feedback from the teachers over the past two years, they talked about, uh, high student engagement, um, quality, uh, cultural responsiveness of being high or very high quality, and teachers reported feeling significant growth and feeling confident teaching history, using inquiries and critical source analysis, and making, uh, their teaching and the course relevant. Um, seven organizations are available for us to, to, uh, partner with to provide professional development. So the grant provides for professional development to teachers, as well as the resources. The resources are available, uh, and they're free online, but that's a lot of printing. So this, uh, is a considerable cost savings, uh, giving us all the printed materials in teachers' hands and the professional development, which is extensive. And so of the seven, uh, organizations, all of which I'm sure are quality, we selected Primary Source. They're the ones that wrote it. Uh, and I have personal knowledge of their outstanding quality and working with teachers. Uh, and so I'm meeting with them next week to, um, scope out our plan for having our teachers, um, be part of this learning in grades five through seven. So that's, uh, just what I want to report on tonight. We're very excited about it. And I met with, uh, the grade five teachers, uh, earlier today at Swanson Road, and we also talked about the potential for, uh, looking at grade three and four pilot for next year.
Oh, great.
Great. Sounds really exciting. This is an area of our curriculum that's been left by the wayside a little bit, um, with other things taking precedence, but it really is an exciting initiative with great reviews on the quality of the materials, so. It's great rigor. Yeah, like fabulous rigor. It's great.
Awesome. Right. Great, thank you, Mr. Keller.
I loved your presentation.
We'd love to be emailed.
Yeah, it was stunningly beautiful.
I thought it was.
Please email your.
Yeah.
I'd like to.
All right, well, are you all finished?
I am. I just figured I would stay up here, just so I can see if anybody is trying to enter the Zoom, so.
All righty, sounds good. Uh, we'll move on to Cecilia for the Business and Financial Report.
All right, in your packet, I provided a year-to-date budget report dated April 3rd, 2024, for your review. And in conjunction with that, I've also provided, um, a listing of budget transfers, um, some between the same series and others between different series, which I'm seeking our approval. Happy to answer any questions you might have with regard to those.
Do we have any questions for Cecilia? I'm seeing none. Um, seek a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the list of transfers dated April 3rd, 2024, as presented by the business manager.
I'll second.
Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote, and we do need executive session tonight.
Yes.
So.
Make a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss the bargaining position with personnel that could be compromised, compromised if discussed in open session. We will not return to open session.
I'll second. Okay, roll call vote, staff? Say yes.
Yes.
Meg?
Yeah.
Myself, yes. Brooke?
Yes.
And.
Sam?
Yes.
Okay, have a great night, everyone. Thank you for watching.
Thank you.